Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, June 28th. At 6:35. Please stand for the invocation, followed by a moment of silence.
Let's pray. Oh God, our Father, we come before you again, as we do every council meeting. Father, without your guidance, without your wisdom and your knowledge, without your touch upon every person in this room, it would all be in vain. But we've paused to say thank you for your guidance and your counsel. Father, our prayer again this evening is for more of that wisdom and that guidance. As the plans lay out for the growth and the development of this community, the families will grow and thrive. Children will laugh and sing and find joy. Father, even those who are homeless would find this a place of rest. So Father, we come before you. We thank you for the protection you provide through those who serve. We thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Is there a veteran in the audience tonight? Mr. Ward, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Good evening, everybody. Councilmen Span.
Present.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uzalak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
And Councilman Bella.
Present.
Thank you.
All present.
No problem. All present, thank you.
Moving on tonight to item six, since there's no petitions, communications, or acknowledgements tonight. The consent agenda is the accounts payable voucher approval for June 28th and the approval of the town council meeting minutes from June 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uzalak with a second by Mr. Pettit. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committees, Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things real quick. We had a ARP meeting prior to this council meeting, and we approved three more petitions this evening, from, but two from residents and one from a business, and just over $20,000 in improvements that are going to be coming down the pipe for us again. And again, we encourage all residents to apply for the ARP money, so that if you need anything done outside of your home, that since you were impacted by COVID, please apply, so that we can hopefully help you get something done. And then later on, we have got a couple of ordinances that are coming up for the salary ordinance that we will be voting on a little bit later. And I think that that's... Oh, this is for you, Chief, that we talked about the light pole for the license plate reader. We approved that tonight not to exceed $17,000 with ARP funds. So if you can let Constance know that to go ahead tomorrow, and let's get that ball rolling, so we can get that installed down at 53rd and Broadway. Okay? Thank you, sir. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway. Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Moving on then to Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, I did have a meeting with all the Public Works employees about a week ago. We are going to be staying in contact, I'm gathering facts as we speak. Once we get some kind of a good solid direction, I'll be reporting back over to the house.
Thank you. Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Mr. Pettit.
I don't really have any report, Mr. President. I know Mr. Hardaway will probably have a parade report further on in the agenda. I'll let him, I'll defer to him on that. That'll be all.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to let the council know that our positivity rate is at 14%, so it kind of dropped maybe 3%. Additionally, there was not a lot of hospitalization. I think it was like 200 people may have, countywide, statewide, may have been with the hospitalization. Other than that, COVID seems to be, I don't want to say stabilizing, but I just wanted to say that it's not increasing. So as long as that positivity rate is the key indicator that we're looking at, then I think we're stable. Marsh, did you have something you want to?
COVID is stabilized to a point. They are coming out with a booster shot for children five years and up, which they will be required to take, I think, before school. But other than that, we're on a basis of a low, low shots, low COVID, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Of course, we'll be monitoring the sub-variants. Overall, the Omicron guy is a predominant guy out there, but there's a couple of sub-variants, but they don't seem to be taking a, how can I say, a huge effect on us at this time, but they're out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We are still looking for Public Works employees. I think we got an interview a couple Friday, but I think it's only two, Pat, if I'm not mistaken. Steve, Pat?
Two.
Two, okay. And so we still need four more? Or has that number grown?
Four, possibly five.
Okay, thank you. So we're looking for more Public Works employees. We've got a couple openings that are going to be coming up at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, part-time, for a site supervisor, as well as a front desk employee. And it's my understanding, Chief, that we have open applications now for the police department?
That is correct.
Yeah. So anyone interested in becoming a police officer, please apply within our town police department, and let's get you started into the system. I think that that's all I got as far as personnel goes, Mr. President.
Did you have a meeting on Monday? Did you want to discuss that?
Monday's meeting, thank you.
Sure.
We talked about the, if I can find, we talked about a position in the police department, and...
I can elaborate on that.
Go ahead.
We had a position open in the police department for IDEX coordinator. We have currently a secretary in the police department that's already certified IDEX coordinator, so we've been putting her in that position, creating her old position available for the process. So that's what we'll be doing at this time.
And then we'll...
So that job will be posted, though, right?
No, go ahead.
The jobs could be... There'll be, yeah, there'll be a salary appropriation from her current position to where the IDEX coordinator is.
But as we talked about at the committee, Jeff, with Rich and I, this is, this is a qualification. You've got to be IDEX certified, correct, to apply for the job?
Right.
You gotta be, no, anybody can be IDEX coordinator or IDEX certified, but you have to be a IDEX coordinator certified, to which we already have.
Right.
So that current secretary is going to be elevated to that position, and then her old position will be open for me.
Okay.
So we need a secretary in the police department?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And I think, and then are we looking for an IT person, too, at this time?
That's still in discussions. We're possibly thinking about going with a company rather than a person, but we're still weighing that out.
Thank you. That concludes that report, Mr. President.
Thank you. So is that position on this new salary ordinance? So we're actually creating a position?
It should be. Yeah, that's the purpose of the salary ordinance up for approval tonight, Mr. President, is because of that position that we just created.
Information Technology Technician?
That's correct, Mr. President. Pardon me, gentlemen. Yes, it is.
Normally, you have those highlighted for us. I was having a hard time.
I apologize.
Sorry?
What was the label as again? I'm sorry.
Information Technology Technician?
I would just label it as IDEX coordinator, because per state, I don't know if it's statute or code or whatever, you have to have, every police department has to have an IDEX coordinator. So I would actually label it as such, just to...
But I think the job is...
No, that's fine. I appreciate that. This job description was literally handwritten and presented to us by the police department. So that's how it came to us, and that suggested or recommended job title.
Okay, but, all right.
All right, here's what we do, Pat. Let's get with the police department tomorrow, get the correct language.
Sure.
And we can approve the pay tonight.
Yeah.
Because it's just paid. But then tomorrow, we need to...
Yes, I still wanted to see the police department losing any of their IDEX privileges, you know? To make sure you had the proper...
I understand.
...in the proper place.
So how about correcting?
That's fine. That's fine. I'll follow up tomorrow, or tonight.
Send out an email, let us know that you did.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, gentlemen. Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Been busy. Kind of stepping on Mr. Hardaway's toes a little bit, but he already clarified all the problems, or openings we had at the PD. Later on, we'll be voting on some additional appropriations for the fire department. I did talk to the chief, and he gave me a breakdown of those appropriations, in case anybody has any questions. We'll review it at that time, and then go over it. Other than that, you know, I know our PD's been busy, and our fire department's been busy, and they've been doing what they can with what they got, and they've been doing a good job at it. So that is all I have for now.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Chairman Minchuck. Yeah, I just wanted to make a statement in terms of, and I know most of the councilmen and women, we're having that huge problem with speeding and running the stop signs. I did talk to the chief, and he did address it in the short term, but I think we need to do something to learn on term. These people are really not caring about stop signs. So I don't know if our, excuse me, I don't know if our ordinance actually fined them enough. I don't know how much that is, but I think when we have a problem that's continuing to spiral out of control, maybe it's, it becomes a pocket issue, a pocketbook issue. So if we had to modify or amend an ordinance in terms of how much fines are, I'd like your committee to consider that, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. White. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. Earlier, the Redevelopment Commission approved a resolution for a combination of six different projects that will create 728 jobs in the town of Maryville at a investment of over $130 million. This includes the two properties at 86 Place for Myel Cosmetics, the Broadway Outlot in front of the Amazon Building, Keel Mechanical, Modern Forge Indiana, Indiana Land Amerplex, and TMGWC Mississippi LLC. Two of those, three of those projects are existing businesses that are retaining their home here in Maryville, creating jobs for our residents, and bringing in more opportunity for people to work here. So I want to applaud Patton and Angie, the Economic Development Department. They did an outstanding job. A lot of the petitioners are here in the audience to make the investment in the town. This is a, this is kind of a big deal tonight, guys, for somebody to bring in 700, these six guys, these six businesses, to bring in 725 jobs.
Total?
Total. We don't, we don't see that very often in that kind of investment. So I want to applaud everybody in the audience. You guys know who you are. Thank you for investing in Maryville.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uzalak.
Thank you, Mr. President. All the parks are in order. They have been mowed, and I do believe the Public Works, they purchased a new machine, which I think Steve can verify, where the longer grass was and weeds and whatever on some of the empty lots. And the last time I talked to Kevin, he said that machine was being purchased. Am I correct?
Yeah, we purchased a new tractor that runs our bush hog machine. We got that about a week or so ago, and it's been out every day, mowing, mowing the, mowing the lots.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
I'm going to defer, since I was out two weeks ago. I'm going to defer to Jeff and Torrance for any updates or reports.
That's fine. At our last, at our last town council meeting, I informed the council and everybody that we started that subcommittee from our last meeting that we had. That committee has been hard at work. We've gathered quite a bit of things. There's a few more things we'd like to gather after the holiday. Once we get everything together, we'll go ahead and contact yourself and have a committee meeting together and go over the numbers.
Okay.
Oh, and Torrance, I have to meet with you after this meeting and give you a phone number. A lady has a daycare that she wants to have a little birthday party at, in one of the parks, okay? I told her you would call her.
Okay.
Mr. President, I will make a couple insights, and I didn't have a chance, or maybe it's timely. Richard, the Juneteenth celebration at the center was fantastic, and everybody that came up to me said, "You guys did an outstanding job in building this facility." Yeah, it cost $24 million. Yeah, we had a lot of heartache, but I think all the residents are extremely pleased with what's up there at the Dean and Barbara White Center. Conversely, I did not attend it, but I think Sunday night, Torrance was pretty successful with the Harlem Legends as well, so...
Yes, it was. Lot of fun.
Good. And then finally, if you haven't had a chance to get into the gym, Mr. Bella's done yeoman's work with PrintPro. The two decals for Maryville High School and for Andrain High School look absolutely outstanding, so...
You do, yeah. Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
That's it.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
I'll table that until we get to special projects. I did want to talk about the Juneteenth event, just so my colleagues will understand what Juneteenth meant to not just one individual, but the entire African-American community and other citizens here. And we got to start saying that. This is not one individual that has this magical power over African-Americans. So I just wanted to just bring that to you, because we all work hard to try to make this community be what it is. People need to really understand what Juneteenth means. They need to understand what Juneteenth means for African-Americans, specifically for some of the older African-Americans. It means a day of freedom. And why I feel a lot closer to it, because my grandfather was born in 1850, and I have documentations on his status as a slave, actually. So I just want to say that I also speak for African-Americans when I say something that's good, and I think, I think it was good, but I think that should be recognized, that it's not just one individual that can speak for African-Americans. Thank you.
Very good. Special Projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of like piggyback off of what we just said. First off, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to Juneteenth. Period. And I'd also like to especially call out the Public Works Department, the Dean and Barbara White Community Center employees, all of our vendors, party crashers, and most importantly, the police and fire. I think one of the things that, the reason why this thing was a success was because of the visibility of the police department. People felt safe coming out, because the police officers walked around, they were very visible, and they were stationed strategically, so that when people came into the facility, into the area, they could see police officers there. And so it was a great time had by all. I think that, you know, we, we understand that it's not just one individual that makes Juneteenth a success. That's the reason why we did it as a town, as opposed to one individual, is because we have to have support, financial support from the town. We can't ask the town to support something if only one person's name is hanging on the shingle. So I appreciate all of the support from the town to make this thing a success. And to piggyback off of that, next month, we're going to start meeting again for next year. We're not going to let grass grow under our feet. We're going to, we'll schedule a meeting next month to start planning, so that this year, I would say between 800 and 1,000 people came through, through the event. And I'd like to really thank Impact Church. They gave away over 500 snow cones, along with free popcorn. They donated to Bouncy Houses, Christian Revival Center. They did a great job of providing things to the people. We had a prayer chant. So I think the whole, the entire community embraced this event this year, and I think that it can only get better. Every vendor that I spoke to said that they made money. Nobody, nobody lost any money. They, a couple of them, the Veterans Cafe, that lady, she ran out of food. Couple vendors ran out of material to sell because of it. The DJ was nice. The band, the band was nice. It was just a great atmosphere. We had great weather for it. And so I, I just want to say that we look forward to planning for next year today, and not waiting until January, February to start planning. I think that that's important. July the 3rd, at dusk, we're going to have fireworks at the high school. We encourage everyone to come out. Gates are going to, doors are going to open at 7:30. That's when they'll start letting people in. And then we're going to follow that up on Saturday, on July the 4th, with a parade that's going to kick off at 1:30 from the community center. Anyone that's, we still have openings in the parade. If you want to be a participant, if you want to be in the parade, please see the Parks Department and Torrance and his group, and they'll give you an application, so that the deadline has been extended to this coming Thursday for the parade applications. We're looking for a great time there. August the 2nd, we're going to have a national night out down at the community center. We're going to block off a segment for each ward, so that each ward have an opportunity to set up a space for their residents to come in, bring your barbecue grills and your lawn chairs, and we're going to have a DJ that night playing music. So I'm looking for a great time there. Just a second. Then I have a request from MIS. It's from the principal, Mrs. Bonan. She said August the 17th is the first day for students, and they would like to invite the community leaders and partners to come and welcome the students at, back to school, at MIS at 8:30. We've done this in the past. We always had elected officials standing out there, and all department heads with placards, welcoming the kids back. Kids get very excited about it. They enjoy it, and it's a great time for the elected officials to be out there and welcome, and see the students, and plus our department heads. Department heads have always enjoyed this. And it was a court judge, they participated, and Clerk Treasurer's office.
What was the date again?
August the 17th. They would like for us to be there at 8:30 on that day. I'll mention it again a couple more times before that, but it will be, and students will start arriving at 8:45.
So, Richard, is it just MIS, or can it be...
It's just MIS.
When did we talk to...
Well, she's the only one that ever requested it. Nobody, no other school has ever requested it, but that's kind of like what she does.
Why don't you and I reach out to Nick Brown and see if we can expand it to the other schools as well, because...
Yeah, because they, yeah, because they do have staggered start times this year. And so, yeah.
We'll look into it.
All right, that'll be good. And then also, they are looking for a sponsor, a community sponsor, for a donation to help purchase a book vending machine. So I, that's something that we probably need to sit down and have a conversation about, and contact some businesses, and see, I think the book vending machine, the purchase is about five grand, so we need to have a conversation with some businesses and see if they, that's something that they would be willing to do. I think that's enough. That's all I have.
That's a lot.
Yes, yeah, it is.
Mr. President?
Madam Clerk Treasurer.
I would like to say I attended the Juneteenth celebration, and I thought it was a great event. I wanted to say that I appreciate seeing some of my coworkers who came out to celebrate with us, even though Juneteenth is a holiday that was recently passed for African-Americans to celebrate the delayed freedom, where there were certain individuals who were still enslaved for two years or so past the time that the Emancipation Proclamation was, was given. So Juneteenth has always been a holiday when they finally, when the federal troops finally came down and says, "You have to let these people free." So even though it's a holiday for African-Americans, we really encourage everybody to come out, and I would love for next time to see more, even more of our coworkers and our council people to come out, because it's not just an African-American event, it's a, it's a celebration for freedom. So I just appreciate the ones that I did see. I wasn't there the entire time, so I may have missed some people, but that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to Department and Commission reports. Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mr. White.
Excuse me, no report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Stormwater management, Lake is gone.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Yes, I almost didn't come myself tonight. I think I know where Matt may be at. It was, so I had a conflict in seeing if I wanted to go to the baseball game versus coming here, so... No, no, seriously.
Oh, okay.
No. So that's what Matt said, because I had the invitation, so I kind of just had the, the conflict, so I decided to make sure my constituents know I was serving them instead of watching baseball. Thank you.
Good idea.
It's all right, it's all good.
Thank you, Mr. White. South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
Thank you. For my colleague, Mr. Lake, I can say that for fact, we went to a residence home in Broadfield subdivision and listened to her complaints or concerns, rather, about the drought and how it's, it's draining the pond there. So we spent time there, and Matt took pictures, and we will be following up with the property owner of the, of the pond. So, you know, for Matt, that's one of the many things that I know he's been involved with. With respect to the Tourism Bureau, I have no formal report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Span, our representatives.
Still waiting on our next meeting.
Department reports. Torrance. Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had a pretty busy month for the month of June. Last Friday, we had a girl empowerment night that was held at the community center for superheroes, so we had over 100 young ladies come with their mother, dressed up as superheroes as a way to encourage them and empower them to make healthy decisions and be positive youth. We had another concert at Prusen Park with solid players that went very, very well. We had, the first time, we had a Harlem Legends basketball clinic on Saturday morning. This past Saturday morning also was a success. We had 2025 kids that showed up for that and participated in that. And we also had the Harlem Legends game that just went on this past Sunday. It was the easiest defeat I've ever had in my life, but that was a very, very enjoyable experience. It's very rare you have the opportunity to share the court with four active members of the Naismith Basketball Hall of Fame, and we have four of them there on the court in Maryville for that. Also, we finished up the Maryville High School Basketball Academy, led by High School Coach Bo Patton. That was very successful. We have another sessions coming up this, well, next month with them, and also with the girls' basketball program. Still have a couple more concerts to go, to do, and also want to give a special thanks to Clerk Treasurer's Department, Kelly Gibson, her staff, Joy Whiteside, Kurt Walton, Jackie Aurelia, for all their help in helping us get these events off the ground and going.
Wait, 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 did you miss somebody?
I said Kelly.
Oh, okay. I want to make sure, because it took my entire day to make sure it got right. Okay. I just got to make sure.
Also want to thank our staff, thank council, for the vision of being able to have the community center, be able to do these things and, and support them. It's a learning experience as we go. I hope this town gets more excited and realize that we're trying to bring things to them and to serve the greater community also.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell Torrance as well that I appreciate the invite to be there with the Harlem Globetrotters. I did have some fun there. Even though I tried to shoot like three baskets, it never made the rim, so... So that let me know I am definitely washed up, so... But thanks, Torrance, for the great job that you've been doing, bringing the community together and the events that you're putting on. That Globetrotter thing was really nice, to be honest with you, and had some laughter there as well. So I just wanted to say that to him, Mr. President.
Tarrantz, I do want to add to it that Mr. Hardaway and I both tripped in together, and we've purchased you a book. It's called How to Coach Against the Fast Break. So that'll be coming forthwith.
Now, wait a second. He was on the Valparaiso University basketball team. Did you score a lot, did you score Sunday night?
I didn't.
He coached.
Yeah, I tried to coach.
Oh, you tried to coach?
Tried to coach.
Did you have Bryce on the speakerphone?
I did. He just told me good luck.
So what was the total score again?
I believe it was 93 to 74.
Oh, that's not too bad.
Oh, Maryville tried.
See, if they had you, you might have won.
We're not the Washington Generals.
Well, just so that you'll know, somebody wanted to make it a condition of your employment for them to win, and I vetoed that. I didn't want to put that kind of pressure on you.
Hey, Tarrantz, just real quick with that concert you hit at Prusen Park, was there any outside sponsorship that was just a town event?
That was a town event.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Cortino.
Yes, that's funny. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things I'd like to point out. I know I stated that when our numbers come in monthly, I'll give you the numbers as far as our calls and service and things of that nature, but it doesn't come in till the end of the month, so I'll have that July the 12th, our next town council meeting. But regarding our fireworks, the 3rd, and the parade on the 4th, we have officers in line for that detail, and we're looking forward to that. And also, I just want to point out, starting tomorrow, the 29th, is the first day that the state is allowing people to discharge their fireworks. Fireworks only, legal fireworks and not firearms. And the times will be from the 29th to the 9th, from 5:00 PM to two hours after dusk, so we set it pretty much at 10:00. And on the 4th of July, they allow from 10:00 AM till midnight. So I just want to let you know, and I'm asking the parents and adults to keep an eye on the kids for safety and where you discharge these fireworks because we want to prevent any fires and any damage to personal property. That's pretty much what I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chief.
One more thing, Mr. President. Definitely want to not forget Kiana Davis and her contributions for the Juneteenth and all the things that's going on with us too, so make sure I shout out to her, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Vicki, Code Enforcement, how are things out there?
This week, we're really concentrating on the parade route to try to make sure we've got everything as well as we can have it. Everybody's grass is cut, nobody has any stuff laying out, that kind of thing, so that's our big concentration for this week.
Great, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
I just want to tell Vicki that tomorrow, approximately about noon tomorrow, I will be on 61st and Broadway, have all my painting clothes. We're starting to see graffiti creep, and I want to try to nail this thing, I think I kind of mentioned it to you a little bit the other day. I want to nail this thing before we start, if it's on 61st and Broadway, it's just a matter before it goes all the way. So I will be out there. Thanks, Steve, for buying the paint and the rollers. If anybody want to join me, just knocking that out, they can, but I think I can handle that myself. So I just want to let people know that when you start seeing graffiti, it's pretty much like people are marking their territories, and it hasn't really got really hot yet, but that's a key indicator that there's something that may be simmering underneath. So I'm just going to try to do my part and stamping that out before I get out of line. Thank you for that conversation.
Thank you. Anything else, Vicki?
That's something that I had dealt with the maintenance man for the property, and I had asked him if he could make sure that it was done Friday so that there maybe wasn't such a chance of them redoing it before our parade, but hopefully, if they've, I guess if they redo it, then Friday he'll be able to paint it again.
Yes.
Thank you. Angie, Economic Development?
Thank you. Yes, we've been very extremely busy fielding leads and working with developers in an effort to find appropriate use for land as well as, as well as working with our new projects that are occurring around town. As Councilman Pettit mentioned, that we have several in the audience today, and we're very appreciative of that $130 million investment and the 725 new jobs permanent, not to mention there's approximately 400 construction jobs that will be related to that. We're also been working on efforts to promote and enhance our marketing as well as our arts and community programs for economic development.
Thank you. Mr. King, Public Works?
So I have several things here. First thing is the backup generator. We are scheduled to do an initial startup of that generator on July 16th. There's a lot of coordination, a lot of moving parts to make this happen, so right now, we're looking at 16th, that's a Saturday. I'll get it out in email because the building power will be shut down two to three hours while this is taking place. It's going to be on a Saturday, so that's the only way we could do this. Keo Mechanical has all of our equipment in for our touchless faucets and fixtures. They're technically scheduled to start the week of July 11th to start installing these things. Our Public Works Department, we've been very busy taking down the Juneteenth banners and signs, putting up the 4th of July, the parade stuff, the banners are up, the yard signs are out, the Job Fair signs we just put out. With the short staff that we have, we're severely short staff right now. We're doing the best we can. The branch pickup program's kind of slowed down. We don't have the people to run every day, so we're, a couple days a week is all we can run right now because we're trying to catch up on other maintenance items in the town that need attention. Paving, we're still, our townwide paving's still going on. We're still out southeast. Those road, the Panhandle roads are looking really good. Part of 93rd Avenue actually got striped today out there, so it looks really good. Madison Street over here, they're striping that today. It's turning out really nice. There's a couple of little issues that we got to get taken care of, but I think overall, I think that project's turned out very well, very well, but that should be finished up here in the next week or so, and then we'll keep moving forward. The Broadway Side Rock Project is still ongoing. The lane closure will be moved off of the road for the parade. We'll make sure the road's clean. We'll have it swept and everything will be, will be ready to go. I also do want to mention the Juneteenth celebration. I attended it myself, our Public Works Department. We started early. They worked late, our summer kids, and everybody did a fantastic job. I talked to Kiana about this as well. I expressed, you know, what a, what a great job she did with the coordination and, you know, just like she told me, and I feel the same way, it was, it was a team effort. Everybody pitched in. Everybody did a great job, from, from our staff to park staff to everybody. It was, it was just fantastic. Weather was great, so it was, it was, it was a really good time. I think that's all I have.
Mr. President, you can read me there. Yeah, I just want Steve to, if you can, Steve, to give them an update on our late night ride through my ward, or do you want me to?
You can, that's fine.
I can do that. Multiple complaints about how dark it is on multiple streets in Ward 7, and I wanted to make sure, because Steve, I can tell him about it, but unless he sees it, he doesn't know. I think we found like, I think I pointed out like at least eight, if I'm not wrong, at least eight streetlights that were out as well, so what I'm looking forward to in the future is trying to make sure people feel safe, because anytime you had to put on your bright lights to go through an area, that's, that's pretty dark. So I just want to let you know, I appreciate you, Steve, because you had worked all day already, and he kind of hung out a little bit with me. He was ready to go. I know he got hungry a little bit there, so.
I made it home by 11. I was home by 11.
He had to be home by 11, so yes. So what I'm basically saying, Mr. President, to the rest of my council members here is that there's a huge problem out there in terms of lighting, and I think Steve witnessed that. I don't know of other areas are experiencing that, but certainly Ward 7 is experiencing it, so I guess the next move is how do we address that? I know Steve said he was going to reach out to NIPSCO to put some poles out there. That's how bad it is, so I just wanted to bring that up to you.
I had a few lights go out in Ward 4, and they were right there. They repaired them, got it right up.
Who did that for you?
Kevin, I called Kevin, and either Maryville has come up.
I just wanted to point out, Leonard, that should be a weekly thing, the council. I talk to Steve all the time about lights that are out so that we can get the bulbs changed, it's not, yeah.
Well, some of them belong to NIPSCO and some of them belong to Maryville.
Right, doesn't matter. They're out, and Steve knows who to call.
Yeah, most of the area that Leonard and I, we found a few, two maybe that were out, but there was areas that where there was nothing, so that's what we're trying to address.
That's not burnt out bulbs.
Yeah, no, but we're, that's what we're trying to address is, is, you know, where to put, where there was nothing, where we could put these things.
Okay.
But I have always called Kevin, and they're right there.
I'm going to move it along, guys, if you don't mind. We've got a heck of an agenda here. Go ahead. Anything to report from the town manager's point of view?
Two things. Just to remind everybody, Job Fair, July 21st, Dean and Barbara White, Community Center, 11 to 3:00. Second, thank the council, thank all the department heads for their contributions. Our request for qualification, pardon me, our request for proposals for the town's comprehensive plan will go out on Thursday, the 30th. A four-week turnaround period. Look forward to the respondents and ultimately teaming up with a developer to bring this plan forward and implement the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, moving on to general orders. First reading ordinances, ordinance 22-15, Madam Clerk Treasure.
Okay, I believe this ordinance is regarding appropriating of funds. Do you want me to read through the whole thing?
No, just the highlights.
This one, because this is a short one.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. An ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the various fire protection territory funds for the year 2022, not included in the current budget. Whereas an emergency exists for the expenditure of money, and whereas the following sums were not included in the 2022 various fire protection territory funds, and whereas it has become indispensably necessary in the fire protection territory funds in order to provide for the payment of certain obligations and contractual services to appropriate additional monies to support the 2022 budget. And whereas the Town Council of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana believes it is necessary and prudent to provide for the additional appropriations, now therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, that this is, that there is hereby appropriated and ordered funds to pay at defray expenses for the calendar year 2022 and for the purposes herein specified, and the following sums are: Fire Department overtime, $30,000; Fire Department diesel, $45,000; Fire Department gas and electric, $30,000; Fire Department repair parts, $30,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Pettit, second, Mrs. Uselak, for approval of ordinance 22-15 on first reading. The amounts read into the record. Any discussion on the, on the motion? Anything to add, Trista? Where are we adding overtime dollars at not even mid-year through the year?
I have to apologize. Unfortunately, I saw this on the agenda in the packets when I looked at it before the meeting today, mentioned it to Mr. Sender, who wasn't familiar with the details. But most importantly, we will check with Chief Yerga tomorrow to make sure that the public hearing has been advertised, which will be needed for an additional appropriation. If it hasn't been, we can get that done tomorrow right away, ordered with a paper. We'll coordinate with the clerk's office.
That allows us to do a second reading at our next council meeting?
With a public hearing at the same time, you can vote, and it will all run smoothly then.
Very good.
I can ask some more details for the next meeting then, too, if Chief won't be here.
Any other discussion by the council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Councilman Span?
Hi.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yeah.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
And President Bella.
Although I understand this first reading.
It's the only first reading, though, I was going to say, but.
Thank you. Seven ayes. Motion carries. Moving on tonight, first reading ordinance 22-16 is ordinance of the town of Maryville authorizing the issuance of the town of Maryville, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Kelly.
This is quite a long one. I'm not familiar with it. Perhaps either Pat or Angie could speak to this?
Mr. Pettit might.
Or maybe Mr. Pettit?
Mr. President, this is a companion ordinance to the resolution the RDC did previously. This starts the process of issuing economic development revenue bonds per the advice of Bond Council Barnes and Thornburg and London Witty. Sean Andrews from Crow Holdings is in the audience. This is the financing portion to reimburse Crow Holdings the $1.7 million we agreed to for utility extensions for the silos at Sanders Farm Industrial Park on both sides of Mississippi.
Is that explanation enough, Mr. Svetnov, for our records?
Yes.
On this first reading?
And with that, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Pettit, second, Mrs. Uselak, for approval of first reading of ordinance 22-16. Any discussion by the council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Seven approved.
Mr. President, to Mr. Reardon, Pat, do we need to suspend the rules and approve this, or is this a June or a July meeting approval?
It will need advertised, so.
Needs to be advertised?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll call the votes, seven ayes, and motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution 22-17.
This is the ordinance that Mr. Hardaway and Mr. Minchuck spoke about earlier in which they are adding some positions in the, this is the salary ordinance where the positions are going to be added. Now, my question is, do you want to go on and do it tonight? Because I know Mr. Minchuck wanted to get the correct name. Yes, okay.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck to approve the ordinance 22-17, which is our salary ordinance, adding a new classification of information technology technician or whatever title is going to be assigned. One thing I do want to point out, and want to ask that your motions be amended, to point out that this position is only for one person. We did not notate that on this ordinance, and we do want to put down how many people can be in that position, right?
My motion is amended.
Mr. Minchuck? Any other discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. White?
The ordinance 22-17, is that the one we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have it on my packet, so I don't know if I got an amended copy, so I don't see it.
Does your, does your agenda say amended in red? Is that the first page?
You've been at your place setting tonight.
You got the old agenda.
Okay, they didn't give me.
They should have put it at your place. Is it buried underneath all this?
No.
It's this one, Leonard, with the blue colored on it?
Leonard, look, blue.
Okay. Okay. I just can see the resolution on the agenda, that's what.
No, it's an ordinance, it's not a resolution.
You got the old, you got the old agenda.
Okay.
Do you have a revised agenda?
No. Okay.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes, please.
On page two of the. On page two of the amended salary ordinance that you have before you, 22-17, you will see toward the bottom of the police department continued, the law enforcement technician line, with one indicated as a quantity for the human to take that position. The hourly rate at $20.46, with a total possible annual salary of $42,556.80.
So was I referencing the wrong?
Yes.
Line?
The information technology technician?
I apologize.
Is the one vacated with Mr. Lambertino's.
Thank you, Trista.
Leaving retirement.
Yeah, I had him, I had him on my mind, that we're replacing him, but we're not.
Right.
Okay.
And so the second adjustment, then, in this amended salary ordinance, is that there is no longer a secretary class two allocated position. That is now going to be the entry level class three, as per the request of Chief Cuttino. And so there is one allotment for that slot as class three. The rate, the 1698 stays as it was, previously planned out by council, that did not change. The rate technically for the law enforcement technician is one that is requested by the police department. That's a new position. That was not one within the ordinance previously.
It's a new position.
You, you mean the information technology technician?
Yeah, I'm still confused now.
Yeah.
Some of that stuff that you're talking about wasn't, never brought to us, to personnel. I'm just hearing about it now. So the only thing that we were concerned about was the law enforcement technician, or the information, whatever.
Information.
Not anything about a secretary.
Okay, so then I'll defer to Mr. Reardon for a moment to fill in extra details on that. I've simply prepared what I was asked to prepare, and maybe there's some extra information to convey, but.
I do not have any more information to provide to the council. Councilman Hardaway, you're correct, our focus at Monday's meeting was, in fact, the position of law enforcement technician, which has, of course, all to do with the IDAX.
Right.
That's correct.
No, I mean, I'm okay with it, it's just that, you know, we get inundated with information now, that's kind of like, everybody's looking like, you know, what are we talking about?
No, I understand.
That's all. So, call for the vote, Mr. President.
It's been a call for the vote. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call.
Mr. Spann?
Hi.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Aye.
Seven votes.
Mr. President?
Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hardaway?
I'd like to suspend, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 22-17, so that we can get this position moving. So my motion is to suspend the rules so that we can have it read under second reading tonight.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck to suspend the rules to read ordinance 22-17 on second and final reading tonight. Is that necessary, Kelly?
Well, I've got a couple questions. Got a couple questions. One, do we have to advertise this because it's a new position? Two, the other question is, there was some confusion about the, the correct name of the position?
That's been clarified, that was my fault.
No, 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 not you, what Mr. Minchuck was saying, that it needs to be correct, so they don't lose there.
It'll be corrected tomorrow.
Okay, so you want to pass it and then we just redo the paper?
Right, yes, yeah. I just, yeah, I want to, I want to pass it and get it into action tonight, so in tomorrow, Pat, and get with Pat, or whoever, have somebody get with Pat, and let's get the correct wording for the title.
Yeah, I could very well be wrong, but.
If I might, though, the salary ordinance before has never had a position that says IDAX. I don't think that, that the language of the salary ordinance dictates this IDAX qualification. It's absolutely in the job description.
I was gonna say, it's more than just an IDAX position. That IDAX is one part, one portion of what the information, or law enforcement technician will be doing. Is that right, Chief?
Yeah, she'll be a secretary and she also have to be IDAX, because we have to have that on the daily.
Right.
And Mr. Lambertino, as the IT person, was not titled IDAX, and so I don't anticipate that's a problem.
And, and, and we keep saying law enforcement technician, but I just want to point out that we also have the information technology technician, which is, I think, what.
That's been vacated now, that Mike Lambertino vacated that spot.
Okay, for all intent purposes.
It is open, right, though?
Can we just approve this tonight, and then just get the clarifications tomorrow between HR, Pat, and Clerk Treasurer's office? How's that?
That's fine, and I just.
Can we do that?
We can approve it and I won't have you sign it. Is that fine, Joe?
Advertising.
Does it have to be advertised?
We did not believe that this was an advertised public hearing matter, unless, Joe, there's something I've forgotten about.
No, I'm just wanting clarification on it. Usually when you deal with monetary amounts, changes, setting salary amounts, whatever else, usually there's an advertisement.
If the council was needing to appropriate additional money to a line item or a new line item.
I'm just clarifying, because I want everybody here to be.
Yeah, yeah. So in this, in this immediate situation, because of the vacation of Mr. Lambertino's spot, the budget that has been approved already to pay the human person is still there and is simply being used to pay a new human. There's no additional money that's being allotted as an additional appropriation.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I will not pass this around for you guys to sign, because we want the correct document signed, and we'll get that all done, and then you guys will assign it later.
A motion on the floor to suspend the rules to read this on the second reading, we need to take care of that first. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call on the motion to suspend the rules, please.
Mr. Spann?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries. We will suspend the rules to read ordinance 22-17 on second reading tonight.
Motion to approve 22-17.
On second reading?
On second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Hardaway, to approve 22-17 on second reading. Is there any public comment on this motion? Please approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Ms. Arch 201 E 68th Place. My comments are actually more for the residents, and I want you to take a look at how the town council is doing business and understand.
Brian, do you have a comment on this?
Yes, I do.
Well, then get to that part of it.
Mr. Hardaway stated very clearly that he was very confused as to what was going on. There was a lot of confusion, but then we're going to go to a second reading and we're going to just pass this.
I think we've got the confusion clarified, that's why. There's no more confusion on it.
The confusion is, I'm kind of confused, because I don't even know, are you adding a new person? Do you, are you just transferring a title? This should all, this should be, these are the sorts of things that should be ironed out before council. That's what I'm trying to point out to residents here. We should have this, where there's no questions, like, hey, this is what we're doing, we're adding this new position, we're going to pay them this amount. It's kind of funny, because no one even actually asked for a salary ordinance, none of the councilors actually asked how much money was the salary ordinance for. Thank you.
So the salary is listed for us, and what we're doing is kind of an emergency situation, our IT person resigned, kind of left us hanging a little bit, so we had to get someone to replace that, so we had to create the position to do that. So that's what we're doing, guys. We're just confused about the title and then some terminology. That's all it is. So we have a motion on the floor for approval on second reading, motion by Mr. Minchuck with a second by Mr. Hardaway. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call.
Mr. Spann?
Hi.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Abstain.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes. Six ayes, one abstention, and motion carries. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinances, we have ordinance 22-14, it's an ordinance amending ordinance 2014, being an ordinance establishing the police officer application fee and repealing all other code sections and ordinances and parts thereof in conflict herewith.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck. What parts do we need to read on the record here? Is it the financial part here?
It's the financial part.
Madam Clerk, Treasurer, section one, would you mind?
Sure, I will. We did read it last time, but I will read it again. Section one, the town ordinance number 20-14, section 16-4, entitled Police Officer Application Fee Created and Established. B and the same is hereby amended to read, provided as follows, namely, section 16-4, Police Officer and Reserve Officer Application Fees Created and Established. Is that, do you want me to go on?
The dollar amounts, the one, yeah.
Okay, let's do it. Within the Maryville Police Department, therefore, there is hereby created and established a police officer application fee and a reserve officer application fee established and fixed pursuant to the provisions indicated herein and as follows. One, police officer applicants to the Maryville Police Department shall pay a non-refundable application fee in the amount of $25, provided however, the chief of police may waive such application fee if payment thereof would be a hardship to the applicant. Number two, reserve officer applicants to the Maryville Police Department shall pay a non-refundable application fee in the amount of $75, provided however, the chief of police may waive such application fee if payment thereof would be a hardship to the applicant. Number three, all fees and payments received by the Maryville Police Department pursuant to this section shall be deposited as continuing education revenues.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this ordinance? Is there any public comment on this second reading ordinance, 22-14? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Spann?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolutions, we have Resolution 22-29, it's a resolution of the town of Maryville regarding waiver of non-compliance. This is for 86th Street Place Partners LLC. Can they please approach the podium in case we have questions, if they're here?
Al's here.
Mr. Pettit, would you mind giving us a little background on this?
This is a resolution that will benefit 86th Street Place Partners LLC. Again, at the redevelopment commission meeting, we granted tax abatement to 86th Place Partners LLC. They will be renting two buildings that are being built on Mississippi Street to Myel Organic, a minority-owned business that not only added on to their building, they're so successful, they need these two buildings, correct, Al?
Yes.
You want to give a little bit more flavor to that?
What happened when we finished their space, they thought they had room for all their trade products and everything, and they ended up needing space. Now they, for sure, is taking the one, and they're still debating on the other one here.
Yeah, for, for those that don't know, Myel Cosmetics, Myel, Myel Organic is an internationally-owned, international minority-owned business that goes all over the country, all over the world with these trades. I've had the pleasure of being there for the groundbreaking when Al did the addition. They're busting out at the seams with their inventory, which is why they needed the 50,000 square feet, and now it sounds like they need more room for some of their administrative operations.
Yeah, they filled that, and they're actually adding more office in the front original building that we're in downstate right now for to add more office staff up in the front building.
Thank you. Mr. Pettit, I retain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, Chair will recognize Mrs. Uszak for the second.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this resolution?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yeah, I just want a little bit more clarification for the waiver of non-compliance. So if we don't give them the waiver, then what happens?
If you don't provide them the waiver?
Yes.
Then the project does not continue forward. And since, I would think that we want to continue to push forward a successful business that's occupying about 70,000 square feet right now, when they started out of their garage, and they're a minority-owned business, that we'd want to encourage them to develop and grow in Maryville and continue to grow in Maryville. So.
I don't think that was my statement, I was just looking for as a reason to why there was non-compliance, and is it was non-compliance in terms of filing taxes, or clarify for
I could add to that. I directly worked with our financial consultant in regards to this project. This is a sister resolution to 2230 in regards to the tax abatement request. The non-compliance is, they were at very early stages of the construction of the project, so therefore, we need to ensure that that was advertised and publicly noted.
Thank you, Angie.
That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion?
I will say that I think that we definitely should do this. I just opened up a big box right before I came to the meeting for Myel Products, and they are excellent products, so, and they chose to be here in Maryville.
Great. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution 22-30, a companion resolution to the one we just approved. Mr. Pettit?
This is the actual tax abatement, granting of the tax abatement in a sliding scale according to the Indiana Code. Starts off with 100% in year one, and they begin to pay 5%, then 20%, 35%, and until the 11th year, they pay a full tax bill on the buildings that were built by Mr. Bartley.
Mr. Svetnov?
Mr. President and Mr. Pettit, just for clarification, these are preliminary ordinances. So what we will need is on July 12th to pass the confirmatory.
Right, confirmatory.
There's been some criticisms out there that we're not allowing public comment. Public comment is not proper right now, since it's preliminary.
Yeah, and these are also resolutions, by the way.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, preliminary resolutions.
Motion to approve 22-30.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Is there a second? Mrs. Uszak for the second. Thank you. Any questions or comments by the council? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 22-31, it's a preliminary resolution of the town council of the town of Maryville, Indiana declaring an area in the town as an economic revitalization area and approving a real property tax abatement for Broadway Outlets LLC. Mr. Pettit?
Mr. President, again, this was a recommendation approved at the RDC. This is a $5.5 million project that will create 50 new permanent full-time jobs, with a payroll of $2.5 million. Angie and Pat and I have worked on this. Rolf Anderson and Jace Murray are here. This will be a beautiful building built in front of, guys, you want to bring the renderings up for the rest of the council, in front of the Amazon building between Broadway and Massachusetts, south of 96th Avenue. Jace, I don't know if they're, you can put them up higher, Chief can help you. Again, Amerplex is a crossroads project, and I should elaborate, and I know Sheila's not here, and I don't know if Angie. South of these gentlemen, we also have Williams Eye Care being constructed as well, and they're going to be breaking ground. So Amerplex, as Pat has alluded to, continues to explode and get completed with investment in the town of Maryville. So, Rolf and Jace, I don't know if you want to add any comments?
Well, first of all, President Bella and members of the council here appreciate your time tonight, and Sean, thank you for the overview there. As Sean said, you know, we're proposing a Class A 38,000-foot building here, a little distinct from some of the big-box things that are being developed by others, and a little distinct from some of the smaller things. We think we found a good niche building here and are excited about the opportunity to get the development going and continue to help Maryville thrive.
Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 22-31.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Yuzelak for approval of Resolution 22-31. Any further discussion by the council? Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next resolution is 22-32. It's a resolution of the Town of Maryville declaring an area in the town as an economic revitalization area and approving a real property tax abatement for Golf Enterprises LLC. Mr. Pettit?
Mr. President, this is, again, a recommendation from the RDC. They passed a resolution. Keo Enterprises, Keo Mechanical is out in the South Ridge Industrial Park. They built a new building. Mr. Richard Anderson is here representing Keo Enterprises. This is a speculative building. Richard, do you want to show a rendering that you have? This will be a $900,000 project with approximately 12 new jobs being created with a payroll of $750,000.
Basically, this will be in front of the Keo building that's out there now, and it's in an M2 zone, so that it's upgraded with a character brick in the front. 12,000 square foot building in west, west town, to the west, smaller.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 22-32.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Yuzelak for approval of Resolution 22-32 for Keo Enterprises. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Moving on tonight to the next resolution, 22-33. It's a resolution of the Town Council of Maryville, Indiana, declaring an area of the town as an economic revitalization area and approving a personal property tax abatement for Modern Forge, Indiana LLC. Mr. Pettit?
Mr. President, this is an interesting one in that we were in competition, Maryville was in competition with their Tennessee plant. Lauren is here from Modern Forge. Lauren Kemp, the CFO. The Fromm family has been an outstanding neighbor. They took the old NSU building on Colorado Street. They bought it, they rehabbed it, they expanded it, they've created jobs. This is a $6.3 million investment. They're buying a new press, which Lauren can go into, creating 20 to 35 permanent jobs with an annual payroll of $1.1 million. Lauren, what will that take your payroll to overall?
That'll take us over $15 million.
$15 million jobs in payroll, guys, in the town of Maryville. That doesn't happen all the time.
$15 million.
$15 million payroll, yes. 20 to 35 jobs. Lauren, I'm sorry, I'm...
That's okay, that's okay. I didn't know where you were going. So that's 275 total employees that we will have. It's about a 15% increase from where we are today.
Super.
And this is a press, right, that manufacturers...
This is a mechanical press for steel forgings.
Steel forgings. And again, I strongly encourage you, as I mentioned in the RDC meeting, Pat and Angie and I, I'd been out there a couple different times, but it's a pretty impressive facility that Modern Forge has out there, and I'm glad you're in town.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yeah, I was just wondering, in your process, do they consume a lot of water or anything of that nature?
It doesn't, we do not consume a lot of water, no. Most of our products are air-dried.
Okay, thank you.
cooled, I should say.
That's right.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve Resolution 22-33.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzelak to approve Resolution 22-33. Any further discussion, questions, or comments by the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to Resolution 22-34. This is for the Indiana Land Amerplex LLC, a similar preliminary resolution. Mr. Pettit?
Mr. President, this first one is for, there are several lots out at Amerplex that the Misner Group... Eddie, do you want to come up to the microphone? Jeff and Margie and I, and actually the council, has rezoned property out at Amerplex. The Misner Group has acquired approximately 87 acres in a variety of parcels, and I believe this first one, Ed, is for the parcel in back of Pinnacle Hospital. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Where they proposed to build, is it 850,000 square foot building?
That building's 806.
806,000 square foot building, south of Pinnacle Hospital, frontage on Georgia Street, and then in back of Pinnacle. This is a $31 million investment in the town of Maryville, creating 40 to 65 permanent jobs and 125, 100 to 125 jobs upon completion with the tenants. Is that correct?
It's actually a $57.5 million investment in this building. We're anticipating 75 to 100 construction jobs and somewhere around 175 to 200 permanent jobs. And that's on the 45-acre parcel, Sean.
Okay. I flipped ahead, actually. That's right.
Mr. Pettit, I do notice that the schedule for the tax abatement is a little different than what we've approved earlier this evening. Do you want to address that, please?
Yeah, one of the things that Pat and Angie and I talked with, and that we've experienced with Crow 1 and Crow 2, and somewhat giving that park some equity to it, is to give the same schedule that Crow 1 and Crow 2 had. If you remember, Crow 1 has Midwest Truck and Auto Parts, along with Quality Pasta and Turbonetrix. Crow 2 is entirely Big Lots Furniture Distribution, and we thought it would be somewhat fair and equitable. No offense, Sean, that they're playing on the same level playing field as you guys are, so that's why we agreed that in Amerplex, we would honor this type of scale and grant that. And that was a recommendation from the Economic Development Committee and the RDC.
Yeah, this building, though, is going to be larger than the other two buildings, right?
Yes, it will. Mm-hmm.
Almost twice the size?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion by the council?
Mr. President, make a motion to approve Resolution 22-34.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzelak. Any other discussion by the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Mr. Span, did you vote? Did Don vote?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Don't wake me up.
Thank you, Don. It just seems like a lot of the work's coming from this side of the...
They're taller than us.
That's okay, we're okay with that.
We're the short guys over here. Thank you, good luck, sir.
I just remember it from redevelopment, so...
Next resolution, 22-35. It's another resolution as an economic revitalization area, approving real estate property tax abatement for Indiana Land 26 LLC. Mr. Pettit, would you like to preference this one for us?
With Eddie's help, yes. Indiana Land 26 LLC, I believe, is buildings 2 and 3. Which would be 251,000 square feet and 173,000 square feet on 26 acres.
Correct.
What's the individual investment on these two buildings, Ed?
Project cost there is 41.5 million with a estimated 75 to 100 construction jobs and 125 to 150 permanent jobs.
Okay.
Just so everyone knows, these parcels that we're going through, and we're talking about, as many of you know and some don't, they're all, this is all contiguous land, so what we did is we assembled four different parcels that were contiguous to the first parcel in Amerplex.
Thank you for that. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, again, a second by Mrs. Yuzelak for Resolution 22-35. Any discussion by the council? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 22-36. This one is another resolution for Indiana Land, this one's 11 LLC. Mr. Pettit?
Yes, Mr. President, this is buildings, Building 4, which is 172,000 square feet on 11 acres, and if I'm reading my map correctly, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, these 11 acres, for those that may remember, this is a parcel of land between Pinnacle and the Strip Center on 93rd Avenue that the town gave three approvals for an assisted living facility, and all three fell by the wayside. Ed and the Misner Group were gracious enough to pick up the 11 acres and plan a building on it to make the investment, so this will actually be on 93rd Avenue, correct, Ed?
Correct.
Yeah. South side of 93rd Avenue.
This really kind of completes that whole quadrant.
That whole, yes, exactly. Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Yuzelak for Resolution 22-36. Any further discussion by the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. See, you're staying up there, Ed, so... Resolution 22-37, another resolution of the Town of Maryville declaring an area in the town as an economic revitalization area and approving a real estate property tax abatement for Indiana Land Number 5 LLC.
Mr. President, this, again, is Building Number 5. It's 55,000 square feet on 5 acres. This is on, going to have Broadway frontage, south of the Ace Hardware Building, and 90, well, down to 96th Avenue approximately. And Ed, I think the, I'm not sure, what is the total investment on this building?
This building is $7.5 million. This one, we're projecting somewhere between 45 and 50 construction positions and 50 to 75 permanent jobs. And this sort of completes the quadrant of land going west from the first parcel we talked about.
Is this going all the way down to the road where Amazon uses?
Um...
Not that far, is it?
No, there's a lot in between 96th and Ed's property. There's one lot that the guys that were here earlier, Arco Murray, Jace Murray and Rolf, they own a lot north of 96th Avenue. One lot.
It's not that large, is it?
Yeah, Murray.
No, it's not. I don't know, Angie, what is it, 3 acres?
Yeah, that's Murray Commercial, and we do have a site plan on that, what they're going to do there. We wanted to get their first project underway first.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, is there a motion, first of all?
I made, 37, I made a motion, Mr. President, and Margie.
I seconded it.
So the motion was by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Yuzelak? Do you concur with that? Did I miss that?
Yeah, they did it.
Okay. They're all looking the same.
Yeah.
Any other discussion by the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ed.
He's got one more.
One more. One more.
One more, 38.
Different location, though. No longer in Amerplex.
Okay, Resolution 22-38. It's another resolution of the Town of Maryville declaring an area in the town as an economic revitalization area and approving a real property tax abatement for TMGWC Mississippi LLC.
Mr. President, again, this is Ed Adler with the Misner Group. This is a piece of land that is immediately adjacent to my subdivision. I'm probably going to be about 300 feet away from this, aren't I, Ed?
I think so.
This is south of the Nippsco High Lines that run east and west across Mississippi. This is on the northeast corner of Mississippi and 89th Avenue. It's a $31 million investment, creating 40 to 65, well, construction jobs, excuse me, or 45 to 60. New jobs are 100 to 125. Anything else? Ed, do you have a tenant for this yet, or no?
We do not.
You do not?
This is also speculative development.
Okay. That being said, Mr. President, I make a motion to approve 22-38.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzelak for approval of Resolution 22-38. Ed, you're going to have to share with us your secret on hiring 725 people. We're having a hard time hiring 6, so...
Job fair.
Okay.
Which we'll be happy to participate in.
Yeah. Any other discussion, questions, concerns from the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for investment in our community.
Yeah.
Mr. Pettit, I want to point out that these are appropriate locations for these types of large buildings.
Yes.
And I think that the town is being wise and keeping them to a certain area where they all seem to fit and where it seems to make sense the most. Moving on tonight to the American Rescue Plan voucher approval for June 28th. You have the pink-colored paper in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ARV, ARP voucher for June 28th is $150,679.75. That's the amount of the vouchers, and so far, we've paid out of that $13,689.80. My motion is to approve this voucher.
Second. You have a motion by Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mr. Minchuck to approve the accounts payable voucher, register summary as presented. Madam Clerk, Treasury, is there anything to add to this?
Only that, at the last meeting, when the power went out, there was some confusion about the amount that was supposed to be paid and whether or not, I think Councilman Hardaway said that he had not done this type of voucher before. So I brought the January, the January one to show that this is something we've been doing every meeting. It has to be signed in order for our office to release any Mondays and any checks. I believe that the confusion probably came in, someone wrote on, and I still have not been able to find out who wrote, on the portion that explains that the greeters are paid per our ordinance prior to us doing the entire thing once Mr. Hardaway has signed it. But the entire amount has to be approved, and so we've been doing this since the beginning.
Thank you for that clarification, Kelly.
Thank you very much. This is White Gibson, Gibson White.
We're on a first-name basis. That's good.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions, or comments about this motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Kelly. Mr. Reardon, are you going to fill in tonight for Ms. Shine?
I am a poor substitute for Ms. Shine. I'll do my best.
I'm not going to argue that.
What is the council's desire here? I can attempt to emulate Ms. Shine and read everything, verbatim, or answer any questions on the individual petitions. I have all the information in front of me.
Maybe just give us the synopsis of these.
Okay. Well, you don't...
Variance of use approval?
That's correct, sir. So we have two petitioners. The first petitioner, and I'm reading right off of the agenda. The first petitioner, Mr. Barry Brewer, Burke Real Estate, variance of use approval to allow a multimedia entertainment company, project property, 8762 Luisiana Street, and the zoning as you see, C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District. And I believe the petitioners are in the audience and, as always, are prepared to answer any questions the council might have. So could the petitioners come up to the podium, please?
Mr. President, just for clarification, it's actually zoned M1. It's in the South Lake Industrial Park.
Yeah, it's on here.
Thank you. Thank you. It's on the syllabus, but on the agenda it's not.
Right, thank you.
If it's helpful to the council, Ms. Schein, the recommendation of the staff is approved for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. I know that Angie Chokot has spent considerable time with the petitioner, driving around town, showing them various sites, and apparently this is a site that they've located to or desire.
Can we get an explanation of what the multimedia entertainment company does?
Yes, we're a film company where we create sets and house productions for television and film. I've been in entertainment for about 20 years, actor and a comedian. I've guest starred in the show SWAT. I'm a lead right now on a show called Tyler Perry's Bruh, where I am a lead on there. And so I've been in front of the camera and making independent films for about 10 years of my 20-year career, and now having a place to house productions where you see your favorite shows, I don't know what's your favorite shows, All in a Family, or, you know, different sitcoms where you see that those are sets that was built in sound stages. So we will be creating sets, shooting television and film for television and film. And in our last meeting, this will be family-friendly television and film, to clarify if your minds may wonder. And this is my wife Jasmine as well, thank you. And we have some documentation to explain a little more about our business. It's called Only Believe Entertainment, the OBE Studios stand for Only Believe Entertainment, which was inspired by believing in your dreams, and I've been chasing this dream for a while and been fortunate to be successful in this entertainment industry. So my goal is to inspire people through television and film, so that's where our motto is. My wife is pregnant, can't give it up for her helping me out, thank you so much.
Mr. President, question, since this is across the street from me. Mr. Brewer?
Yes, sir.
Are you taking the whole building?
No, sir, not as, not, not right now.
Oh, you're just renting?
Yes, I'm renting.
County attorney's got a copy of the lease?
Yes, sir, it's about 10,000 square foot of the building, yes.
You're taking 2,000 square feet?
10,000.
10,000?
Yes, sir.
What they're eventually hoping to do, though, is buy their own parcel and create their own multimedia studio.
Yes, yes. Well, we have back lots and.
That was the presentation that was made.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, the goal is to expand. And working in LA where you have Paramount, Warner Brothers Studios, is to create multiple sound stages. There's only one sound stage, a big sound stage in Chicago called Center Space, so the goal is to be the second largest in the Midwest, and we would love to, you know, build here, so we've been working with your development department and looking for different land and spaces here.
What investment are you going to be making?
Right now we have a loan of 3.5 million that is approved, so we're looking to see where we're going to build and where we're going to build at.
How many employees do you have?
At this present moment, we only have four.
Four?
Yes, and we have a salary for 750,000 for staffing when we open our bigger facility.
All right, very good.
That's great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of this petitioner to allow the multimedia entertainment company.
With all of the conditions, Mr. President.
Of course. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella.
Best of luck to you, I vote aye.
Welcome to town.
Thank you all so much.
Congratulations.
Our first video production studio on the town.
Could be big.
First in Northwest Indiana.
That marketing video that we've discussed.
Could be shot there.
Angie.
Very good. Moving on tonight to the next petitioner, Mr. Reardon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The petitioner is Sabhana Mohammed, owner of Chicago Capital LLC. The request is a variance of use approval to allow warehouse with retail address 5840 Broadway, zoning C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Perhaps it'll help the council, I'll just read Sheila's comments. Petitioner is seeking a variance use approval to allow warehouse in a C2 Community Commercial Zoning District in 8,000 square foot facility. Petitioner will sell retail and wholesale tobacco products and general merchandise such as five-hour energy drinks. The warehouse will have storage in the back of store and receive product shipments twice a week on the average. No trucks will be parked overnight. The business will be secured with gates and alarm and cameras. Petitioner will have four to five employees, including himself. Most times, business hours will be 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., retail hours, pardon me, and 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. wholesale hours. Petitioner will receive four deliveries per month. Warehouse open hours Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Retail open Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Retail open Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And as always, for this petitioner only, for this use only, and for this location only. I believe the petitioner is in the audience?
He's here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, pardon me.
Okay, so this is in the existing Strip Center there?
It's in Broadway Plaza.
At Broadway Plaza.
It's in my ward.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yes. I've met with the petitioner, and we've had, we've had great conversation. He understands that he butts up against the residential area, and I was at the VCA meeting when they discussed the number of trucks that would be coming, and that was down to four per month.
So one per week, it's one per week.
Yeah, right, that's, that's one per week. The petitioner understands that, he understands the cameras, and he understands the impact that he'll have on the community if he doesn't abide by the rules, because we monitor that daily, because I come down 55th Avenue numerous times today.
All right.
So, but he understands everything, and he's amenable to everything, and I appreciate him taking that, that space, because it's been empty for a lot of years. And to get something in there finally that's going to add quality of life to the residents in that area is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
What are these trucks delivering or transporting?
It's not, they won't be semi-trucks, Mar, it's only going to be, it's like vans.
Oh, okay.
Or small box trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just.
That's all they're going to be. It's not going to be, it won't be semi-trucks ever, it's just going to be box trucks.
So what's the purpose of the box trucks?
They're bringing material, they're bringing supplies.
Move merchandise.
That's all.
Merchandise.
Yeah, that's all. So motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mrs. Uszak for approval of this variance of use.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yes, I just want to say for the record, on my document here, I got 5840 Broadway, is that not the wrong?
The correct address is 5480 Broadway, the agenda is inaccurate.
Okay.
I was just going to announce that, actually. Actually, Kelly pointed it out. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk Treasor, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Hi.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir, thank, thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Is there any old business before us tonight? Hearing none, is there any new business? We have a memorandum of understanding between the town of Maryville and Northwestern Indiana Regional Planning Commission for partial reimbursement for the trail counters. Mr. Hardaway?
I got it, I got that one. I got that one.
I'm sorry, Terrence.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sorry, Richard.
Mitch Burlaga and my predecessor, predecessor was working on this project in 2020 before COVID happened, and so upon taking over, he reached out and contacted me and worked on, wanting to finish this. Basically, what this does is provide counters to our trails to find out how active our trails are being used. So in that, the counters cost 3,615, including shipping. They are asking us to pay 20% of that, which will be 1,446. Instead of invoicing, he asked to present this in the form of a memorandum.
Where are you going to get the money for it, Terrence?
When there's a will, there's a way. No, we have, we have $1,400 to pay for these.
And it's just one counter? It's one time?
Just one time. It's a one-time payment of $1,400.
Oh, for two of them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Terrence.
We need a motion?
We do.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. White for approval of this memorandum of understanding between the town of Maryville and NERC for partial reimbursement for two trail counters as described. Any other discussion or questions by the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Terrence.
Thank you.
We have no special presentations tonight. Moving on to public comment, is there any public comment this evening? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please keep in mind that comments should relate to the council meeting tonight.
Rick does. Counselor Gerald.
Hello, my name is Nada Doty, 1134 West 72nd Court, M. Maryville. I'm quite sure you already know me already, I've been up here every month. About my property, I do want to say that Mr. Providence Ken, he did do the yard. However, he was, I was promised my pool, and I do have all the text messages, and he told me to get an estimate, which I did, and I paid for it. Now he told me I am now a mealpiece, and I did not appreciate the comment, and he said he was not doing my pool, it is my responsibility. Now, it's a lot of names, I can call him, but I'm not going to go there with the council.
Yeah, could we, we need a copy of that, please?
I sent it to Sheila, Sheila has all emails.
She happens to be on vacation this week, and she's traveling, so we'll follow up on that for sure.
And I didn't appreciate him calling me no mealpiece, I don't need handouts from nobody.
Right.
I didn't appreciate that at all.
Sorry, that was said to you, ma'am.
Okay, I need my pool done, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I am Ms. Arch 201 E. 68th Place. Tonight, town council handed out quite a bit of tax abatements to multimillion-dollar companies, and Maryville residents want to know why their, their property taxes are going up. Well, that's because multimillion-dollar companies aren't paying their taxes for 10 years, and it's really kind of shameful. And it's even more shameful because we have a town council that not one person asked, how much will this tax abatement be worth? How much taxes are we going to let them slide on the first year? How much is it going to be worth the second year? They want to tell you how many jobs. I've asked them before, who actually here at the town of Maryville goes and finds out how many people work at these businesses? No one, no one does that. There's no way that we can calculate a value for, oh, we're allowing $500,000 of taxes to slide, but we're getting 5,000 jobs. No, we don't even know if one person in Maryville works at these places. And then we have the town attorney who says, you don't need to tell the residents, you don't have to give them the opportunity to object. At what point in time do we get a value proposition where we understand this is how much money the town of Maryville is giving away, and this is what we're getting for it? Because we don't know that, and nobody has asked that. That's all I want to know, I just want to know, what are we getting for the money that we're giving away while the rest of the residents are paying higher property taxes?
So, Mr. Reardon, don't we follow up on these companies? They don't get the abatement unless they produce, actually, Brian, so tax abatement doesn't really increase residents' taxes.
Mr. President, the, the tax abatement.
We're not going to debate, we're just going to answer your questions, okay?
The tax abatement process starts out with a statement of benefits form that's created by the state of Indiana, and they fill that out, and they give it to Pat and Angie, and the Economic Development Committee reviews that. After these abatements are granted, they are required to do a CF1, Compliance Form 1, that says that what they said on the SB1 is in fact happening at that business.
I just want to name, I want the name of the person who works for the town of Maryville, whose job it is to make sure.
Pat Reardon.
Pat Reardon.
Pat Reardon, I've met with him, he says that he does not do that.
He takes the town manager. Brian, I was town manager here for two years. Now, we need to clear the air, Mr. President, because this happens every meeting.
Mr. Pettit?
And I took the time to sit down with Angie and Pat and try and educate you on TIF districts, and lo and behold, you go bashing Richard and Rick and I on Facebook. I don't appreciate that, Brian. I took the time to try and get to know you and to educate you on how this town runs, and that's how you pay me back.
Okay, here we go. I asked 30 questions, he answered zero questions.
Brian, I can answer your question.
I, I, I came in here.
Your friend sat at that table, had seven pages of notes, Brian. You didn't say one word when I rattled through all the TIF information that I have. I don't appreciate my credibility being questioned, I do not. I put in 20 years, 25 years for this town. I do not appreciate my credibility being questioned.
So, Brian, I was here for a lot of that time, too, and you didn't ask a lot of questions at all, sir. I was shocked, but you did not, you just kind of sat there.
Mr. President, for the council's benefit, the Economic Development Department, working with town administration, will be producing reports that, that speak to a lot of these issues that, that Brian is, is bringing up. And a couple of facts, these properties are vacant, there are no structures there. Most properties are zoned agricultural, generating very little dollars on the, on the land side. So we're not getting any money on the, on the building side. So with, with that starting point, these companies earn the tax abatements awarded. They're not getting anything, they earn them, and there, as Sean said, there's an exchange. And if after review, and we just reviewed two tax abatements this week, but if after review it's found that the companies are not in compliance, then we'll report that out to the council through the committee process, and if we need to recommend that the abatement be rescinded, we'll do that. And perhaps, Brian, the reason why the council is not sitting here going back and forth about questions is because staff creates reports, and the process lends itself to answering all those questions, so the council doesn't need to ask about the jobs or the investment. Perhaps it's because working together, they have the information beforehand. But come to the next series of meetings, and you'll hear reports about the investment of the companies and what the town, as you clamor or say, what is the town getting in exchange for this? Thank you.
I hope that helps out, Brian.
It actually doesn't, because again.
I'm sorry, then, I don't know what to say.
Again, the story is, we do this, we do this, how about we just get the numbers? Let's get down to the easy things that we can all understand, because we do this every day.
We're done.
When we go to get gas, hey, if a place is selling the gas for 25 cents cheaper, we're heading there. We don't really care who's selling the gas, we want to know what the value is. And it is unfortunate that we do not know what the value is that we're receiving. I'm not saying that we're not receiving the value, what I'm saying is, is we do not know what the value is. And because we have a lack of that information, we have a lack of ability to judge, is this a good deal or is this a bad deal?
So you don't see value in hearing that there's 726 jobs being created and the millions and millions of square foot being built that will eventually be on the tax rolls? That's what this is all about, we have to compete with other communities, Brian, and we have to offer incentives to come here to build some of these products.
I, I really understand that.
The payroll that's going to be spent.
In 10 years, when what we're doing is betting, is the company going to be still around in 10 years? But you know what I see, the development-wise in North Maryville? Nothing, not one thing. And you know, I asked about, specifically during our meeting, about Crossroad Plaza, and you know what they said? We can't help the person who owns Crossroad Plaza, that's a private industry. Oh, okay, well, all those businesses down there are private industries, we can't help Oh, okay, well, all those businesses down there are private industries, we can't help them.
Well, they're not, they're not even built yet, Brian, so.
But if they don't come.
That's the sad thing, we're giving taxes to people who don't even have buildings and we can't even help the people who are there. That's what my point is.
Okay, thank you, Brian. So remember, comments should be based on tonight's agenda, please? I gave you a lot of leeway at the last meeting, sir, so. I'm talking to you, go ahead.
Oh, me?
Yeah?
Yes.
We're not gonna do a sales pitch tonight?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay.
First of all, I just wanna tell each and every one of you, thank you for what you're doing for the community.
Thank you.
Um, and actually, um, Mr. Reardon, I just wanna say thank you for directing me in a, um, in a way where I can be able to, um, acknowledge, you know, what you said, which is thank you. So, you know, to the, um, Barbara, well, not the Barbara Dean and White, but, um, the, the Chambers of Commerce of Maryville. So I did get a chance to talk to them. So I just wanna say thank you and also I wanna talk to you after this. Um, and also, I would like to put up a sign in the town of Maryville. Um, this is my son. I told you guys last week, well, when I met you back, that I lost 100 pounds in three and a half months. And actually I have my son losing weight also because I believe in, you know, health is what we need in the community. So I was just like, I don't have a lot of money, you know, I do have a lot of time. So what I'm saying is, if I can put up a small sign that I can put up every day and take it down, a small stand-up sign, um, if I can put it there like at 8:00 in the morning and I can take it down by the time before they, before the Barbara Dean and White Center closes, so I can just advertise what, uh, we're promoting, uh, which is health in the area for my health and, for my health products. It's just a small sign about this town and it's, um, like a rectangle. I just, you know, like a stand-up sign, I'd just like to, you know, put it there and pick it up every day.
We'll, we'll take that into revise, we're not, we're not gonna answer tonight, of course.
Okay. And I also would like to know if I can set up a Zoom meeting.
We need the address where you wanna put the sign.
Uh, at the Barbara Dean and White Center right in the front, the, the brand-new facility that just was built.
You wanna put a sign on the Dean and Barbara White?
Not, not on the sign, but like, um, somewhere, if I can speak with someone that's, who, who's in the Barbara Dean and White Community Center, who runs that department, um, where I can speak with them, so I can put it in an appropriate spot so no one would trip on it, fall on it, but it'll be very visible for people to see.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be putting any advertising signs for a company on the, on the town property, sir, so.
Okay.
Then I can answer right now. But you can see, Terrence, about advertising possibilities inside the building.
Okay.
We do have bricks you can purchase, there's signs you can buy, so there's a lot of opportunities there. And Hitz Terrence is right there.
Yes, sir.
And that's who you need to talk to.
Thank, and, uh, one more question. Uh, I would like to know if, um, last night with the, um, with the COVID-19 situation going on, if I could set up a Zoom meeting with anyone here that will be, because I, I remember you said, uh, Mr. President, that you wanted some more proof on it. So I have whatever proof that you like.
We're, we're doing, investigating ourself on your product.
Yes, sir.
So we, we don't need your help to investigate you, we're, we're doing it on our own.
Yes, sir.
We got your information at the last meeting, so thank you for that.
All right, but, but actually, sir, with all due respect, uh, I would like you to speak with the, um, the owner of the company with those products, which he would be able to, because you know, we can all do our own, um, research, but I wanna get you, I wanna give you the correct research that you would need so you can validate a better, um, you know, a, a better, you know, uh.
Okay.
Validation.
I'm gonna call you on time.
Yes, sir.
Tonight, so thank you for your, your comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I'll be back at the next meeting.
Looking forward to seeing you, thank you. Is there any other public comment tonight? Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, announcements. Town of Maryville fireworks, as Richard said, July 3rd. They should start around 9 o'clock behind the Maryville High School. Hope you can attend. The Fourth of July Parade is on July 4th at 1:30, starting at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center and traveling south to 80th Place.